We will call to order the city commission meeting of January 21st, 2014. The record should show that we've got four commissioners present tonight. Our first agenda item is our order of business, and I understand we do maybe have a couple of changes. Mr. Coling, you're gonna tell us about that?
Yes, Mr. President, there are two items that we would remove from the agenda tonight, Items E1 and E2, development agreements regarding Lamont Second Edition and Pinecrest subdivision. We would request that those matters be pulled from this night's agenda. We anticipate being able to bring those back to you at the next city commission meeting.
So in Section 8, E1 and 2?
Yes.
Anything else for the agenda? Does anyone else have anything? Any changes to the agenda? If not, we should have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. With that, we'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any of the four items on the consent agenda that anybody wishes to discuss? Not look for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. We will move to the non timetable agenda, Item 4. And the first item on the non timetable agenda is a new ordinance proposal, ordinance amendment concerning retirement ordinance. Mr. Coling, I presume you're gonna take that?
Yes, Mr. President, and commissioners, this ordinance provides some changes to our retirement programs for city employees. As you may know, the city operates four retirement programs. There's a pension program for city employees, a separate pension program for police employees. We have a pension program for the volunteer fire department, and then we have a defined contribution plan for city employees who began employment with the city after 2006. We have been recently informed by our plan council out of Minneapolis that there are some changes that need to be made to our retirement plans in order to maintain their compliance with Internal Revenue Service obligations and regulations issued by the IRS. This ordinance would make those changes. They are predominantly technical in nature. One of the recent changes made in federal law concerns, for example, retirement contributions that are made for employees who may have been killed in service. If they are called up for National Guard service and they are killed in service, federal law now provides that their retirement obligations are credited back to them for the time that they were in service. So they get employment credit on a pension program for the time that they were engaged in military service. It's those sorts of technical amendments that are made in this ordinance. We do recommend approval of this ordinance. Now, the retirement plans are being submitted to the IRS for recertifications to maintain their tax exempt status. In order to do that, we do need to have these plans approved by the end of this month, by January 31st. Because these are enacted into ordinance, and ordinances do require two readings before final passage, we will be requesting a shortened meeting of the city commission sometime next week in order for you to approve second reading of this ordinance. That way, we can have this certified to the IRS as having been approved by the end of this month. For your record keeping, this would be ordinance number 1539, and city staff would recommend approval. Mr. President.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Coling? Any comments?
Mr. President?
Yes?
To approve first reading of ordinance 1539?
Before we can take a motion, it is a new ordinance, we need to do a public hearing. So we'll ask if there's anybody from the audience that wants to comment on this proposed ordinance. Would anybody like to comment on the ordinance to amend our retirement plans? I see no comments. Mr. Steiner?
I would restate my motion to approve first reading of ordinance 1539.
Second.
In a second, any discussion on the motion? If not, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Do you want to talk about a date now?
Yes, Mr. President, our code requires that there be at least a week in between first reading and second reading. So we were looking at Tuesday of next week to have a special city commission meeting in order to address this ordinance. Anticipate it'd be a fairly short meeting, maybe five minutes.
Tuesday's not gonna work well for me. I don't know about the rest of you. What about Wednesday?
Wednesday won't work for me.
Wednesday is the 29th, yes.
Were you looking at this time of day, Mr. Coling?
You know, I think city staff are flexible. Whenever three or more of you can meet, we'll make arrangements to have it done. This room is used on Thursday mornings for municipal court, so that probably would not work.
Let's go Tuesday afternoon, and I'll see if I can make some changes.
Okay.
4:30 Tuesday?
At 4:30.
I'm fine.
That'll work.
Okay. What is that date? Must be the...
28th.
Be the 28th.
What time?
4:30.
4:30.
4:30.
Okay. We'll move to Item B. This is an HR code revision, it's our second reading. Mr. Coling, I presume you're gonna...
Yes, Mr. President, commissioners, this ordinance, second reading, there have been no changes to the ordinance for first reading. It provides shift differential pay to fire department employees. Fire department is anticipating moving to a 24-hour schedule. In pursuant to our typical policy, those departments who run a 24-hour shift are eligible for shift differential pay for those overnight hours. This would provide shift differential pay to fire department personnel working between the hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM.
Mr. President?
This is second reading. First of all, any questions by commissioners? We'll ask if anybody from the public would like to comment on this ordinance, the second reading of this ordinance. Hearing no comments, we'll look for a motion for second reading of 1536.
Motion to approve, second reading, ordinance 1536.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Okay, we have on our agenda tonight two requests for pilots, payment in lieu of taxes for low-income housing. Mr. Coling, I assume that you'll introduce these and that we'll do each one separately, I presume?
Yes, Mr. President. As you stated, we have two requests for payment in lieu of taxes, or pilots, pursuant to city's past practice. We have entertained these pilot requests for low-income housing projects. There are two of them who have requested to engage in this program. In basic terms, it provides low-income housing projects with a dedicated payment for what they will pay for their property taxes, rather than having their properties valued pursuant to our ordinary property assessment and equalization method. State law does provide for this, for a payment in lieu of taxes to be engaged or to be agreed to for a term of 20 years. Both of the projects do have representatives here tonight, I believe, and I would defer to them to introduce their projects to you. Other than that, I don't believe I have anything else to introduce on these two pilot requests, Mr. President.
Okay, before we do that, Mr. Coling, my understanding there's been some change in state law with regard to low-income housing?
There has, Mr. President. In the last legislative session, there was a bill that was passed that did provide a tax exemption for a low-income housing projects. That is an alternative method for obtaining a tax exemption. By state law, if a project is a low-income housing project, it may qualify for a tax exemption, and then those projects would make a payment in lieu of taxes dependent upon, essentially, their rent discount, what the rent discount is from a market rate apartment. That's an optional form of dealing with these sort of pilot requests. This is a separate program that is still available to cities that project developers can apply for payment in lieu of taxes to governing jurisdiction, to a municipality. That option still exists within state law, and that is the option that these developers in the city would be pursuing at this time.
Okay. Okay, do we have someone representing Dickinson, Lincoln Park, tonight? Just give us your name and...
Good evening. My name is Ben Hyde. I'm with GA Han Development, and our address is 380 Franklin Street, number 104, Harbor Springs, Michigan, 49740. Thank you for your time today, and thank you for considering this request. Our company is requesting a pilot for Lincoln Park Townhomes Phase 3. We're the same owner that developed Lincoln Park 1 and 2, which is over off of Lincoln Avenue. These are townhome-style apartments, two- and three-bedrooms. They have attached garages. The first phase was overwhelmingly successful. We leased them up very quickly. Those two projects, one component is affordable, one is market rate. This new project would be 35 units, all affordable, very similar to the first two phases, two- and three-bedroom townhomes with attached garages.
Your first phase, you said, was affordable?
Yes, sir.
And how many units?
Forty units.
Can you give us some kind of idea of the demographic cross-section of who the folks are in that unit?
Sure. We really have a wide range of people living there. It's single parents that bring a child or two along. We have some people that pair up and room together. Really, the only restriction that we have is all members of the household can't be full-time students, so as long as there is one non-full-time student, pretty much anyone can live there. They do have to meet income restrictions, of course, which are 60% of the area median income or less.
Can you speak to the rents that you're charging, at least, in Phase 1?
Sure.
And how that compares to Phase 2 or Phase 3?
Actually, they're going to be exactly the same, and the rents range from a low of $373 for a two-bedroom, and that's the tenant-paid rent. Tenant is responsible for electricity, heat, and we, as the owner, are responsible for trash and sewer and garbage. So it's $373 for a two-bedroom, up to $975 for a three-bedroom.
Ms. Colter, one other question. When you talk, what percentage, and we hear about this here as income-based and low and so on, a lot of our concerns are with the elderly. Do you have a percentage of the elderly that are in your homes?
Seniors are welcome at our developments. We don't have a specific percentage reserved for senior households, though.
But can you tell me, of the 40 plex that you have now, how many would be 55 and older?
I'm not sure offhand, and I'd be happy to gather that information for you.
I think it would be interesting if you could.
Sure.
These are all two-story units, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So they are geared more towards families.
I've been in them, they're very nice.
Thank you.
And the next project we're looking at is geared towards senior living, right? So, but I understand where you're coming from on that, too.
Mr. Hyde, we have it in front of us, of course, but can you summarize for others listening what the tax situation would be?
Sure.
For a 20-year period?
Sure. What we have requested is a fixed payment of $10,000 in years 1 through 10, and that would increase by 3% each year in years 11 through 20, and then a full ad valorem taxes thereafter.
Okay.
For clarification, Mr. Coling, they're also asking for waiver, one-half of the billing permit fees, utility connection fees, meter fees, and tipping and landfill fees. We have not offered that as part of the payment in lieu of taxes, have we, with prior?
Commissioner Steiner, no, we have not. We've had other developers ask for similar waiving of fees, and the city's past practice is not to grant that waiver.
And do you see that this $10,000 for years 1 through 10 and 3% each year, is that consistent with our other pilot projects?
It's not. It's a bit of an unusual request. You'll see in the one that follows this, what we have negotiated there, talked about there, is essentially it'd be a payment in lieu of taxes in the amount of $350 for each unit with an escalator of 2% per year for each of those units. I think that's more consistent with our city's past practice and what we have done on previous pilots, and probably the direction that we would look to go with this one as well. I understand this project may not be definitive on the number of units that would ultimately be constructed, but that's something I think we would have the flexibility to adjust as they continue with their project plans.
And what did we do on the first phase of this one? We did it more of our standard practice, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Actually, on our first phase, we did not request...
Did not request?
No, sir.
Okay.
In three, I'm just doing the math real quick in my head, 350 per unit, we're looking at 35 units. Is that 14,000 in year 1? I don't know if you have...
Yeah.
Someone...
Right around there. Just a little background on our request. When I spoke with city administrator Kessel, he told me a little bit about past pilots that had been granted. He didn't know offhand what had been approved. He told me to submit a request, what we felt was reasonable, and that the commission would consider that, but they might adjust it based on what had been done in the past. So I guess we're not rigid in this request. If you'd like to make it the same as what you've done in the past, or what others are requesting, we're certainly open to that.
Are we, it sounds to me like we're headed to a different arithmetic schedule than what we've got before us. I wonder if we don't need to put this back a couple of weeks so that Mr. Hyde can get together with staff and have that in front of us, so we can see where that would end up? I'm not sure.
The only issue that creates for us is we have an application due to North Dakota Housing Finance Agency at the end of the month, and pushing it back a couple of weeks causes issues with our application.
The end of this month?
Yes, sir. We're competing against other projects across the state. This is one of the criteria that they consider. By not receiving these points, it makes us less competitive. It's less likely that Dickinson will secure the housing.
You know, historically, we've been very supportive of the pilot programs that have come before us. We've wanted to be consistent with each one of them. I think that's our main contention. And so we're not pulling back support, and we're wanting to come to terms with some math that's consistent across the board, and I understand your deadline. Mr. Coling, is there a way that we can work with him on the math this week, and then at our special meeting next week, that's five minutes long, we can add five more minutes to it and do the approval there, so he meets his deadline as well?
That is acceptable to me. Yeah, that'd be fine with city staff. That's okay with the applicant.
And that would work for you, to get with them to do the math, and we can make the decision next week?
Absolutely. Could I teleconference into that meeting?
Yeah.
Coming from Michigan.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's up to the commission. I think if we're able to work out the numbers, we have a general direction of where to go, we may be able to do that without the applicant being present.
Yeah, so if just between now and then, you could get with city staff and get the numbers how they need to be, they'll present them to us at the next meeting, and then...
I'd be more comfortable if we had the numbers in front of us.
Yeah.
I would agree with that, but as long as we are seeing eye to eye here on that, I don't think we're gonna, well, myself, I don't know if I can vote for the one-half of the billing permit fees and utility connection fees and so on.
I think we'd be looking at something consistent with what we've downed on each of the other. Isn't that where you would want to go with it, too?
And we can...
And again, that's no surprise to us. Sean said, "Put it in your request, and we'll chew it up," and if we don't want to do it, we...
Shoot for the moon and see where you end up.
Right.
But we can address that between now and Tuesday as well.
Yeah.
So should I work with attorney Coling to figure out what the exact request should be?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
So, Mr. Hyde, anything else from you?
No, just thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate you considering this request. We look forward to another successful project in Dickinson.
Any other comments from commissioners? I assume we'll need a motion to table then, Mr. Coling?
Mr. President, if you wish, you can have the minutes reflect that no action was taken on this matter.
Okay.
And then we'll take it up on the 28th.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hyde.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you're doing for the community, too. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the second pilot is from Heritage Hills. I believe that's Phase 2 of their project. I see Mr. Maddler in the audience. Mr. Coling, you have any comments before? Okay.
Mr. President, city commissioners, for the record, my name is Dan Maddler. I am the chief operating officer for Beyond Shelter Incorporated, a North Dakota-based nonprofit developer of affordable housing. And I'm here today requesting a payment in lieu of taxes in support of Heritage Hills Phase 2, along with the housing authority of Starr County. Essentially, Beyond Shelter would like to partner with the city to develop Phase 2, which would basically be a low-income housing tax credit community, providing affordable housing for seniors age 55 and older, and is currently located at 2585 Dakota Boulevard, Dickinson. Quick recap on Phase 1 progress. Currently under construction. The contractor is framing the second story, and we are on track to open in the fall of 2014. Heritage Hills Phase 2 would essentially provide an additional 39 homes for 39 senior households serving the community of Dickinson. The plans would be to break ground in the fall of 2014, with construction completion in the fall of 2015. The unit mix on Phase 2 is 31-bedroom units, of which six of the units would be fully handicap accessible, and nine two-bedroom units, of which three units would be fully accessible. Phase 2 would offer monthly rents currently ranging from $352 to $643 per month for a one-bedroom unit, and the two-bedroom rents are currently set at $718. Just to note, the owner, or the Beyond Shelter, will pay all utilities except for electricity. Eight of the units will serve households earning 30% of the area median income or below. Two of the units will serve households earning up to 50%, and the remaining 29 units will serve households earning up to the 60%. To give you a little idea, flavor of what a 30% household income is, for a one-person household currently in Starr County, that would be $13,980 a year, or essentially, if you break it down, it'd be $6.72 an hour. For a two-bedroom, 30% household unit, the annual income would be $15,960 a year, or essentially, $7.67 an hour. Some of the amenities included in the rent would be onsite laundry, in-unit laundry hookups, community room, and exercise room, a library, computer center, controlled building access or security, and features that would allow aging in place and residents to remain independent. We have worked with, and will continue to work with, local area service providers in the hopes of providing a whole menu of services, ranging from onsite senior meals, transportation, senior commodity supplemental food, representative PE services, et cetera, all in the hopes of having residents age in place. And Heritage Hills Phase 2 essentially serve the community of Dickinson by operating as affordable senior housing for a minimum of 30 years. To date, the project has secured $600,000 in North Dakota housing incentive funds, of which 100% of it is capitalized. The project has a funding commitment of a half million dollars, federal home funds, and approximately $78,000 commitment from the Starr Development Corporation. We're here today to request a pilot essentially to provide a buy-down of the rents. It's the most powerful tool a community has, and essentially would reflect approximately $117 reduction in rents for approximately 31 of the 39 units. Because the 30% units are essentially at $352, they're already basically set at a level. I provided in my handout material approximately eight bullet points regarding the pilot itself. I'm not going to repeat every bullet point, but essentially, it is a powerful tool to allow affordable buy-down of the rents. And essentially, Heritage Phase 2 would provide affordable quality housing option that will enable local seniors, longtime residents, and those on fixed incomes to affordably live in the community of Dickinson. I appreciate and thank you for your time and consideration, and I stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Maddler. And this is the project that I think, when you came in with your Phase 1, what, a year or more ago, you talked about the Phase 2, I think, at that time?
Correct.
And are we structuring the pilot arithmetic similarly?
Correct. The baseline would be $350 per unit on the initial year with a 2% escalator for the remaining 20-year term. And I believe city attorney Coling did present a resolution in addition for this pilot that kind of mirrors that transaction. This is the Phase 2 project, so this is the second request under the statutory, and so Mr. Coling presented the resolution because things are pretty much ready to go.
Questions? Mr. Steiner?
Mr. Maddler, so we're combining both phases into this one pilot project here, and the 350 per unit, and you got the 42 units, so your taxes at 2015, 14, 7, and 2016, we're adding in the other 39 units, so both phases will, are going to be included in this one pilot proj...
Correct.
Program. So, this is what we did last time, and I think it's worked well for us.
Yeah.
Other comments? Other questions? I would ask the same questions, Mr. Maddler. You know, a sense for your tenants, what, who are they, you know, in general terms?
Sure, sure. Essentially, I'll quickly talk about the senior and then the family that we have. Essentially, because we're under construction for Heritage Hills Phase 1 and Phase 2, I can only comment on what we've seen in other communities, and my base community is Fargo. Average age of the tenant in Fargo is 72, and basically, it is typically a female household, single, earning, well, social security income, et cetera. And so there are also, a lot of the tenants, about half the tenants also receive some form of rental assistance to help them affordably live in their community. Regarding, with Phase 1 and Phase 2 complete, Beyond Shelter would have developed 105 units serving the community of Dickinson, and the other project, Patterson Heights, we did not pursue a pilot. It was structured differently. It was a workforce housing law enforcement project, and the tenants that are living there, eight of the tenants are basically law enforcement households, and the remaining tenants are basically just family, household members in the community that qualified under the income guidelines of the programs used to finance that project. Ranging, we had the one, two, and three bedrooms, so it basically, household size of one all the way up to the three bedrooms up to six. the way up to the three bedrooms up to six.
Okay.
And their families.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, we want to open this up to the public as well. If there's anybody here that would like to comment on the Heritage Hills project, please do so. Come forward. You hear no comments? Anything else from commissioners? Which, what is the resolution number, Mr. Coling?
Mr. President, this will be Resolution 08-2014.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 08-2014.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, we will vote. Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, with that, we are at about 5 o'clock. We have one timetable agenda tonight, Vacating Utility Easement. Who's going to introduce that? Is that Mr. Kubus or?
Mr. President, I'll take that one. Mr. President, commissioners, this resolution provides for the vacation of certain utility easements located in Country Oaks Second Edition. All of the affected utility companies have signed off on the easement vacations, and city engineering staff has recommended approval. This easement vacation has been noticed and advertised pursuant to state law, and city staff would recommend approval. This would be Resolution 09-2014. President?
Thank you, Mr. Coling. I'll first ask if there are any commissioners who have questions of Mr. Coling. And if not, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody here tonight that would like to comment on the vacation of this utility easement? Any comments from the public? If there are no comments, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve Resolution 09-2014.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The motion carries. Okay, we will go back to the non-time table agenda. Other reports, and I assume that's you, Mr. Coling?
Uh, Mr. President, I am covering these reports for Mr. Kessel and don't have a whole lot in addition to the materials that have been provided in your packets. First of all, though, we wanted to include our incident summary and fourth quarter safety report. This report is put together by Chief Seavock. It does indicate that some of our workplace injuries and incidents have increased in the past couple of years. We're continuing to investigate that and try to make some worksite improvements and process improvements in order to minimize those incidents. Part of it has to do with increasing numbers of staff and the increase in workload on those staff. But Chief Seavock and his group do a good job in trying to train our staff and minimize those injuries and incidents as they occur. For the Hiring Journal, I believe Ms. Nomenek is here, and she is available to present that to you.
Good evening.
As you see at the top of the journal where I've listed police officers, it's been a tough time trying to interview and fill all those positions. We just did interviews on Friday, had a great day of interviews, surprisingly, for once, so that was awesome. We did make one hire, and she will start on February 3rd. So we do have one starting soon, and we've got five positions at this time open. But as I said, a real good day of interviews. So we'll see what comes out of that. Library director just closed on Friday, so we'll begin the interview process on that. Firefighter, we had three openings for 2014. They were staggered openings, and we actually hired all three of those positions. The first one started in January, the second one will start in April, and the third one will start in July. We made three offers and they all accepted, and we'll be starting on those dates. Sanitation supervisor, we've got two positions. We just filled one at our landfill, and that person has just started, and the sanitation supervisor for the operations portion is still open. We're kind of holding off to see what we're going to do with the landfill and the bailing at this point, but that one will be advertised soon. Sanitation laborer has been a difficult position for us to fill recently. We've interviewed and ended up with nobody showing up for the interview. We've reopened the position, did not hire again. We reopened right now again, and it's still open at this time. So we'll see. The holidays was kind of a bad time for us to be advertising and trying to fill positions. Sanitation operator, kind of the same thing as the laborer. We've had positions open, not able to fill it, and we've reopened it again, and we'll do interviews tomorrow for that one. Street maintenance, I just got done doing interviews today on that. We have three full-time positions and a halftime position. Had a real good day of interviews, so we'll see how that ends up. Signing and stripping specialist, we have our person who's currently holding that position is retiring in March, so we decided to fill the position now so that person could work with him before he leaves, and that was filled with an internal applicant. So, of course, then that opened up a custodian position that was just filled, so now we'll be, we've got that advertised. And then the water utility operator position is a new position for us for 2014, and that was just opened. So we've got quite a few of them open right now, but so far, things are looking good. Any questions?
Do you advertise these on our Channel 19?
I don't believe we have. That's an option.
Think you could do that?
Yeah.
Might help?
Yeah, definitely.
Ms. Nomenek, this has been a tough job for you the last couple of years. Are you seeing, are you sensing any change in trends? Are you getting any more applicants? Are you getting any better qualified applicants? You seeing any changes in those trends?
You know, I almost hate to comment on that because the minute I do, the next time is different, you know? So the last couple of months, it was very disappointing, just not many applicants and not, you know, not real qualified applicants. Yeah, Friday and today proved different. So we'll hope that they're going to keep going this way. You know, I think that our, the increase that we saw in our salaries definitely is helping. We had a nice increase this year, so hopefully that will continue to bring some applicants.
Okay. Other questions? Comments? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Coling?
Mr. President, commissioners, the next item is the Capital Improvement Plan. There is a document that Mr. Kessel puts together and has maintained regarding all of the public infrastructure projects that the city is looking at over the next couple of years. Right now, we have 24 projects that we have scheduled and are attempting to provide funding streams to those. Some of those projects are under construction, others are under design or being bid in the next couple of months. We anticipate the 2014 construction season to be a very, very busy year around town. If you look at the construction projects that we have listed on this document, pretty much every area of town is going to see some sort of construction, public infrastructure improvement going on. And we continue to work with the state and some other officials to work through our funding options, and are confident at this point that we can get through all of the 24 projects that are scheduled on the Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Steiner?
Mr. Coling, the Quiet Rail, is that the old number, or I understand we might have some new numbers?
Million?
Commissioner Steiner, if I might, we did have a meeting on the Quiet Rail project, and they just recently updated that number. It's come down significantly. We looked at Livestock Lane last time when they met. That was an expensive addition. We'll be in touch with the county. A couple of these crossings are actually in the county, but penciling out some numbers, I think the city's share could be closer to a half million dollars.
That's what I was looking for.
Okay.
That's good news. Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Public Safety. We're going to talk about the Architectural Agreement for the Public Safety Center. Is that Mr. Coling? Chief Seavock?
Mr. President, I'll take that one. This is a proposed amendment to the design contract that we have with Schutz Foss. They are currently designing the Public Safety Center. As you will recall, the city did issue an RFP, a Request for Proposal, for a construction manager at risk. That is the delivery method that the city has been pursuing for the Public Safety Center. That is a delivery method that comes with some restrictions by state law. There is particular findings that need to be made by this body, by the City Commission, in order to engage a construction manager at risk, particularly that the services that will be provided by a construction manager at risk will not duplicate those services that are provided by a design architect or engineer. If these amendments are approved, the city will enter into negotiations with J.E. Dunn, who is our selected construction manager at risk, in order to negotiate a contract for the construction of that building. The construction manager at risk, delivery method does provide some benefits to the city in terms of being able to negotiate a firm contract price for delivery of the building. We continually, in some of our projects, see change orders or increases in construction cost. A construction manager at risk eliminates many of those risks so that the contract price is a firm contract price, and the risk of subcontractors or material suppliers goes with the construction manager at risk rather than with the city. The other design contract modifications do incorporate the construction manager at risk, as well as changing some of the scope of work for the design engineer. There is also a fee that is incorporated within this for the design engineer that is a lump sum fee of just under 1.15 million. City staff do recommend approval of these amendments and the findings included in this resolution. If it's acceptable to the City Commission, this will be Resolution 10-2014.
Mr. President?
Okay, questions of Mr. Coling? My understanding, Mr. Coling, we did do an architectural agreement some time ago. This is now just incorporating the construction phase?
That's correct.
And coordinating that with the architectural agreement?
That's correct.
Comments, questions? If not, we are looking for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this Resolution 10-2014? If not, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, and we have a report. I presume Chief Seavock will do that.
Commissioner Jackson, commissioners, tonight we're going to present the fourth quarter report for City of Dickinson Fire Department activities. This is just dealing with the fourth quarter. It is our intent that in the very near future, we'll bring you an annual report summarizing everything. Incident response, you can see in the red column is the first quarter, green column is the second quarter, the blue is third quarter, and the yellow column is the fourth quarter. The very first grouping is alert crew responses. The beginning of the year, our alert crew responses, we're taking our volunteer firefighters away from work and home a lot, and we actually became aware of problems in the workplace because of the amount of times we were asking them to respond. We did some restructuring internally, trying to push more off onto the, our full-time response through some simple restructuring. We were able to do that and still make sure that we responded to potential calls with at least a three and ideally a four-person response in the engine. So you see that the full-time response has grown in comparison to how the alert crew response has decreased. That's simply because we were starting to pick those calls up during the day with full-time personnel and not calling out the volunteer personnel unless it was truly a fire or definitely a potential fire situation. We did a pretty good job of easing the load on them, as you can see by the graph. OIC responses continued to climb, peaking in the third quarter. That's the officer on call responding to check something out. General alarms, we had five general alarms in the first quarter, two in the second, two in the third, and five in the fourth quarter. In previous years, we would have five general alarms for the year. Here, we're looking at 12 for the year. That just shows you an increase in activity and the increase in the involvement of that activity also. Our night duty response continues to climb by quarter. It's every night now. We've got, with the addition of full-time staff, we will have three people available for a nighttime response, where we only had two before. And it couldn't happen at a better time, as you can see by the figures in the graph. That night duty response is continually climbing. Special calls, medical assists, extrication calls, hazmat responses. You can see there, again, we kind of, we peaked in the third quarter, the couple of extrication calls that we had to deal with. Ended the year, though, with just one special call in that respect.
Chief, can you back up to that slide, please? With the additional of the three full-time staff that's coming on, that, how much of that would reduce the full-time and put it into the alert crew? How many do you need for an alert crew?
And we stagger our response. So we, when a call for service comes in, as I know you guys know, we don't send everybody and everything. It's a staggered response, starting with just an OIC or the OIC and the alert, or the night duty people or the alert crew people. The alert crews are made up of full-time staff and of our volunteer firefighters, and generally, that's eight firefighters, an officer in charge, and two response trucks. Now, if they can't handle whatever it is they've responded to, then it escalates to a general alarm. The full-time people that we're hiring, that are going to be on a rotating shift, the intent is, we'll have at least one full-time firefighter on duty all the time, around the clock, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. That will supplement that volunteer response. And that, now, that alert crew, that full-time person was probably part of that, or was in fact part of that alert crew prior to us going to this new schedule. So it's not that we've really gained another body in as much as we've gained somebody in a tactical location. They're always there, they're always available, they're always ready, even if it's that they've, they've got the truck running, they've got the doors open, and when those next volunteers, when those first volunteers, I should say, hit the fire hall, there's that much less that they have to do. It's amazing how that affects our response time. So, yeah. Fourth quarter incident response, again, 127 calls in the fourth quarter of 2013 compared to 94 in 2012 and 94 in 2011. 35% increase just in one quarter. Fire prevention and public education in the fourth quarter, of course, encompasses our fire, our October activities, was what I'm trying to say, I guess. But routine inspections, 170 routine inspections is a great effort. 150 follow-ups generated by those routine inspections, 52 construction inspections, seven childcare, 14 miscellaneous, that, those are complaint calls and all others, fire suppression systems tests, fire drills, all wrapped into miscellaneous. Tours, lectures, and demos. Fire Prevention Week, of course, happens in October. That's the phrase I couldn't remember just a few minutes ago. Fire Prevention Week activities stretch way beyond just the week. 114 activities, 36 plan reviews conducted in the fourth quarter. Quarterly fire prevention activities included 43 tours, six- Quarterly fire prevention activities included 43 tours, 62 lectures, 1,435 contact with students, that's how many students we contacted. Lectures and extinguisher demos at Dickinson High School, fire drills at the residential halls of Dickinson State University and at Pulver Hall. Station tours included not just school groups, but also included residents at Evergreen and Cub Scout troops. Quarterly fire department activities continued with something we call neighborhood visits. We take all the trucks out with our personnel to the parking lot at the Biju Activity Center, actually. We have tremendous response from the community, where the people come out. We'll give rides in the fire trucks to children accompanied by adults. And, of course, we escorted Santa Claus to Prairie Hills Mall, and that's very important, actually. You can see some smiles at the podium. Election of officers took place in our December meeting, and we'll be bringing that information to you also. And at the end of 2013, we had one of our volunteer assistant chiefs, Assistant Chief Larry Callahan, retired, took his retirement from the department after 32 years of service to the department and to the community. A couple of years ago, Assistant Chief Callahan also received recognition from the American Legion as firefighter of the year in the state of North Dakota. Mr. Callahan has decided to stay with us in the capacity of a reserve firefighter, and we are extremely pleased with his decision to do that. Our quarterly training, the Build and Burn is a prop that we built with support from the community. It allows us to do Class A live-fire burns. We finally were able to complete that prop and had instructors come out from Bismarck to help us do that properly the first time. Our car fire prop is a propane-fuel-based prop that we trained on in November. December, firefighters practiced ropes and knots, working with salvage covers, winter operations, and street locations. The street locations was really interesting. I have to tell you, it was all the named streets, not the numbered streets, the named streets in the city, and it's amazing how many there are. What that training did for us is we're working now on putting together basically a three-ring binder of street names with a geographical grid location and a map page. We're going to put one of those binders in each one of our apparatus for quick reference. Special operations training, in addition to the regular training in November, was auto-extrication, and in December, hall systems, that relates to high-angle rescue, that's all rope work again. In other training, we had eight firefighters, eight new firefighters, that passed their probationary training in the fourth quarter. We had two of our full-time staff attend the National Fire Academy in Emsburg, Maryland. Senior Fire Inspector Mark Selly is in the Executive Fire Officer Program, and Fire Inspector Todd O'Donnell completed the Fire Inspection Principals Program. That concludes the fourth-quarter report.
Thank you very much, Chief Seabuck. Anybody have any questions for the chief?
Chief, I have a question here. Looking at your incident reports here, and there's a lot of them. It looks like almost 50% of your alarm system sounded unintentional, smoke detectors not, you know, undetectable or that type of, are these the hard-wired smoke detectors?
Yes, they are.
For the commercial buildings?
Commercial and residential now. Now that there are our security companies out offering that, we will get residential alarms come in as automatic alarm sounding in the hallway of such-and-such residents. We're bound to respond. We have no choice but to respond. A lot of times, what you'll see, there's probably a direct correlation to that amount you're looking at related to false alarms and false calls. And by the time we roll out of the hall, we'll get a call from dispatch saying the property owner has contacted them or the business owner has contacted them, and it's a non-fire situation. Generally, we will send someone to check out exactly what happened anyway, and we will let them know if it's a problem, if it's a correctable problem, a detector that should be replaced or a detector that should be moved or a work process or something that should be changed. We let them know that if they don't change that, if they don't make that change, the next time we get called, there will be a fee assessed, and we've started doing that. But still, you're right, Commissioner, there is just an awful lot of those, and we have no choice but to begin our response because we really don't know what the situation is at that point in time.
Do you have any of the, people that require service have a number of unintentional calls repeatedly over and over where there's?
We have some businesses that we know are that, and those businesses, now, in a commercial, a commercial fine, if you want to call it that, it's in the city fee schedule, that's $100. So we'll respond, let's say it's a new situation, we'll respond once, we'll see what the situation is. We may respond a second time and let them know, you know, if this situation isn't corrected or if you don't change something and this continues, you're going to start getting a bill. From that point on, they do start getting a bill. It's difficult a lot of times with our calls because they're not always that type of situation. If it's a kitchenette-type of an affair in an apartment building or in a motel or a hotel, and there's some burned food is, you know, the reason why the detector went off, it may be listed as a false alarm or a false call because it didn't evolve into a structure fire, but the alarm system actually did what it was supposed to do, and it was actually caused by something that could have escalated. So we have, we look at that, and we kind of make some decisions as to whether or not that's a billable offense or not. Just depends on all the things involved with it. But that does take a major portion of our time, the alarm systems and what's out there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chief Seabuck.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move into Agenda Item Number Six, Engineering. Looks like we have a number of task orders and reports. Mr. Kubus?
Police report?
I'm sorry. Do we have a police report? It's not on this agenda.
No. That was on my agenda.
We're just moving on.
Next to me?
Okay. Okay. Mr. Kubus?
To present the task orders, we have Loretta Marshick with the Engineering Department.
Okay. Welcome, Ms. Marshick.
Thank you. Good evening. The first task order we want to bring before you is a task order with Apex Engineering to continue the relationship we currently have with them for doing plan review services. Typically, we initiate those plan reviews, ask them for help with submittals for FEMA applications, stormwater management plans, civil plans for developments, things of that nature. So that was task order number seven with Apex.
Okay. Questions on the Apex task order? I would just, I think we should approve this task order, no problem there, but Ms. Marshick, are we, do we see a point where we will start doing some of this work in-house?
I think as maybe development slows down a little bit and we get some additional staff, I think that's definitely something that we're working towards, and I think that was the purpose with this on an annual basis, is when we get to a point where we can handle these ourselves, that's our intention.
But we're not there yet?
We're not quite there yet.
Yeah, okay.
Especially with Apex. We have another, some other firms that have these same type of arrangements, and Apex does a lot of our stormwater and our larger development reviews, and that's something that we really still need help with.
Yeah, okay. Other questions? If not, we should have a motion approving this task order.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Continue.
All right. Item number two is task order number seven with KLJ Engineering. We would like to task them with designing 15th Street West, which is the north side of the West Ridge Development, west of 30th Avenue. We anticipate that to be an urban section. And at this point, we would just like to enter into a design phase with them and help us find out some good, better numbers estimating on what we would like to see constructed there.
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve KLJ Task Order Number Seven, 15th Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, we will vote. Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans? The chair is going to abstain from this vote. Ms. Marshick, again? Motion carries.
Item number three, excuse me, is KLJ Task Order S5, and this is an amendment to the contract that we have with KLJ for designing Empire Road, which is a realignment of a portion by the new hospital. And this amendment is for construction management services with that project.
And again, we need a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve Task Order S5.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, we will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans?
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Chair will again abstain. Thank you, Ms. Marshick.
Thank you.
Reports, that's going to be, back to you, Mr. Kubus?
Yes. Mr. President, Commissioner, just like to give a project update on the State Avenue Railroad Grade Separation Project. As you recall, last commission meeting, we had a public hearing where we heard lots of comments, we took lots of comments for and against the project and for and against specifically two options to access all the businesses along State Avenue that currently have their business access off of State Avenue. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts to this puzzle right now, and we've been in conversation with property owners and the DOT, and we believe that the staff can benefit from some additional time to break a recommendation to the City Commission and ultimately a recommendation to the DOT. We're working with some potential revisions or modifications to those two options that we looked at at the last meeting. That would improve some traffic flow and potentially some right-of-way access issues for some of the property owners. The city staff that asked that at this time we'd place this item as well on our special meeting next week, so we can make a formal recommendation to the Department of Transportation.
If we're going to do that, are we going to have more information before then? And I assume that we'll have a recommendation from staff?
We hope to have more information at the staff level. I think either way, we have pushed the time limit to its extent, and we really need to make a recommendation as a city to the DOT.
Okay. And that will be the decision between the options one and five or modifications thereto?
I think it would be safe to say a variation of one of those options, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or thoughts about that?
I think our five-minute meeting has turned into a...
Mr. Kubus, go ahead.
Moving on, HDR is engaged with the city to perform a master drainage study, which they've started. They presented to the commission in December, and we're looking for some direction on how to move forward with that project. What came out of their presentation was that what the city really needs is a capital improvement list, a program for stormwater projects, and to the extent they've taken that project forward, we're not there yet. We don't really have a list of tangible projects that the city needs to undertake in regards to stormwater. So the staff has reviewed the progress so far to date on the project, the budget of the project, and our recommendation would be to have HDR move forward fully with the drainage master plan. The one caveat there was that there's data that needs to be collected, survey data to cross-section the open ditches that run through the town, to get invert data on manholes and the like. And what we've discussed as city staff and our recommendation to you is that we would issue an RFP to affirm that could provide survey services on an on-call basis, almost, to not only provide this data collection for the drainage master plan, but to provide any other data acquisition that we would need. Public Works Director Zurhoff has been working to get our GIS database up to speed, and it's been several years since we've collected that sort of data. So through this RFP for survey services, we would collect the data needed to move forward with the drainage plan, but also collect some of the data, the infrastructure that we've added to the city in the past, really in the past decade, that hasn't been collected to keep our GIS database up to speed. This will be really helpful when we go out and have to do one-call locates for all the construction projects, when we locate our city utilities, it's only as good as the mapping that we have, and this will really help that issue out. So city staff would make two recommendations here, one, to move forward with the drainage master plan, and also to issue an RFP for survey or data collection services. Do you have any questions for me?
So does this mean you're going to be presenting us with an amendment to the HDR contract, or where are we?
No, there wouldn't be an amendment to the HDR contract. There would be a separate contract that would be for surveying services that would, part of that data then would be given to HDR to complete their study.
I understand that, but you also talked about moving forward with the drainage study.
Correct. There would be no supplement or amendment needed for that study. The budget was in place, it's just right now, we need the data collection to happen before it can move forward.
Okay. So do we need action on this tonight? You're going to proceed with the RFP, we'll ultimately...
Mr. President, pursuant to past practice, the city does issue RFPs from time to time and then brings those matters back before the commission once we have a selection and a contract for you to approve.
So we'll look at it that time. Okay. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Kubus?
I just have a brief project update. Mr. Coling briefed you on the capital improvement plan as we have it today. Some of those projects have been bid, are being bid right now, but we do have a large list of projects that are to be bid either later this winter, early spring, and some projects throughout the year, in the summer and the fall as well. And what we've done is we've compiled a list of those projects that we feel comfortable with, with our funding stance on those projects, and we've given each project a short description, and we want to email those out to plan exchanges across the region. What we've compiled is a list of over 40 plan exchanges in an 11-state region, because right now, our projects are going to be in competition with, you know, not only all the private projects that'll be happening in Dickinson, but projects in Williston, Minot, Bismarck, and projects with the Southwest Water Authority. We'll all be competing for that same contractor pool, so we want to get some pre-advertising out for our projects, and we thought this would be an inexpensive way of doing that. There's no cost to send this short email out and have it posted at these plan exchanges. So it'll be a lot of work coming up, and we hope to continue to get competitive bids. We felt this was a good way to increase our chances of getting those bids.
Good.
That's all I had.
Good. Any questions for the city engineer? Okay, we'll move on to Public Works. Mr. Zuroff?
President, Commissioner, first, I have the 2013 Annual Stormwater Report. This is the annual report required by the City of Dickinson Stormwater and MS4 Program. As you recall, we were audited this year, and all the deficiencies were corrected and completed, and this is the annual report, and it's required to be approved by commission.
I thought the, I thought the report was well-done. I thought it was, it was meaningful and...
I'll pass it on.
Looked like a, like a good report to me. So we need to take action approving that annual stormwater report?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have questions about the report, first of all?
No, I thought it was well done, the pictures were very helpful, the detail, the narrative is really easy to follow.
I agree, and I think having articles in a newspaper as well as radio and, you know, your promoting service are really important, because we got, I got a lot of calls with the snow removal, and I wish that we would have had at least one article in the newspaper.
Okay, we need a motion then approving the 2013 Annual Stormwater Report.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote, Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Mr. Zuroff?
Next, I have the west lift station bid. This lift station is on the west business loop and Highway ten, and the bid includes the lift station and all the underground piping, except the railroad crossing, and all the piping goes to the new influent pump station on Livestock Lane. Mr. Berg with Apex is here to present this. I guess the bid is for your acceptance.
Commissioner Jackson, members of the city commission, will just take about five minutes and walk through the west pump station to refresh this project prior to award. Give you a project overview, talk about costs, go through schedule, and then award of the contract. This map is an overview of Dickinson, and just in broad terms, wastewater through the existing town, city follows the yellow lines, travels south and southeast towards the stockyards. General plan for, to accommodate growth is to bring wastewater from new areas around the west part of town and through the south part of town, again to the area of the stockyards. We also have wastewater coming from the west, from Dakota Prairie Refinery and from the city of South Heart. The west pump station enforcement is this portion that's highlighted. The pump station is by old Highway ten and the west business loop, with a force main that heads west on Bullard, will cross railroad tracks and head south along state, and then turn east again along Fifth, Fifth Street South. We incorporated parts of two other projects into this project, Lift Station Four and Lift Station Five. From the comprehensive plan, Lift Station Five is an upgrade in force main, and instead of having a separate force main, both Lift Station Five and West Lift Station are going to use the same force main. The decommissioning Lift Station Four, we're putting in a new gravity sewer as part of this project on Fifth Street South. Since we're going down that street, we're laying that deep gravity sewer in now, so that we can decommission Lift Station Four down the road without ripping up the street again. The pump station is built to be low maintenance and reliable. We have capacity for future expansion and odor and corrosion control at this facility. This is an architectural rendering, rendering of the lift station. Only about a little over, a little less than half the station is above ground. If you look at a profile, more of the station is below ground. We've got the main gravity sewer coming in about twenty feet below grade. This is the wet side of the lift station, flows into the wet wall and down into the pump inlets. If you look at the pump profile, this is the pipe where the water's coming in. Comes in the pump suction, travels into the dry side. We've got two-hundred-and-twenty-five horse pumps in the station, and we'll pump it out the force main. Another section of the pump station showing the biological odor control and the chemical corrosion control. The biological odor control controls odors at the site, the chemical odor control will control odor and corrosion in the pipeline through town. Force main is two-point-six miles, a twenty-inch force main. We've got a little less than five-thousand feet of gravity sewer. About two-thousand feet of that is the deep gravity sewer on Fifth Street, will be about thirty feet deep. This project is designed to receive future flows from Lift Station Four and Five. One of the items we ran into during the design phase of this project was potentially contaminated soils at a couple locations, and we did our soil borings, primarily down here by the Hart River. We've made some allowances for that in the project. We've put a fixed quantity in, in the project, and we'll just have to wait to see what we get into during construction. Our final design estimate for this project was thirteen-point-three million, and then the location factor that, that changes, but fifteen percent would be an extra one-point-four million. We had great bids. We had a lot of interest from contractors, we attracted contractors from Montana, South Dakota, and Minnesota on this project. We had real tight bids that were close together. Our lowest combination was separate electric, general, mechanical, and electrical. So tonight, I'm going to recommend awarding the contract to Williams Civil Construction on the general contract, Williams Plumbing and Heating, which is a sister company on the mechanical contract, and Coal Strip Electric on the electrical contract. We've reviewed the bids, we've, we've talked to the references and are comfortable with these contractors. Total project costs, our total combined bids was twelve million, seven-hundred-nine-thousand. Five percent contingencies gives us a construction subtotal of thirteen-point-three million. With design right-of-way and construction added to that, gives us a total project cost of just under fifteen million. Project schedule, award of contract this evening. Notice to proceed would be February sixth. The Department of Health is expected to grant approval for this project for the environmental review on February fifth, so the next day, we would get the notice to proceed out. Substantial completion is October of 2014, with a final completion the following spring, primarily to deal with landscaping issues. I guess the one other thing I was going to mention is that we opened bids today on the west gravity sewer. We had ten, ten bids on that project, so a lot of response. So I'll be back in two weeks asking for approval on that project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. It's our job tonight is to accept the bids and award the contracts to the recommended contractors.
Yes, contingent on Department of Health approval.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about this project for Mr. Berg or Mr. Zuroff? You know, the only thing I would comment on, or... Some of these things that we're building right now are unlike any facilities that we've ever had in Dickinson. I assume that, in the case of this project, that you two guys are looking at training needs and operational needs. It's one thing to spend all this money to get it built, but it's, it's going to be something new for us to take care of in Dickinson.
We've had a lot of discussion about operations of the new water reclamation facility and these, the new pump stations. Just learning the, the new technologies. Also, we had long discussions today about operational costs of these new facilities. You know, the own operational maintenance of these are going to be considerable, that we're not used to the, these large lift stations and treatment facilities.
I know that's true.
I do want to thank Mr. Berg for doing the recap. I think these large projects, it helps the commission for these recaps, and I, and to show what, you know, what we're doing on these larger projects.
I, I agree, and I'd like to see this periodically with, you know, maybe not all projects, but as you say, at least the more major ones, I think it's really helpful. Okay, Mr. Coling, did I state our need, the motion correctly?
Yes, I think so, I think we have that for the minutes. Award of the contracts to the recommended bidders, contingent upon approval of the Department of Health.
Okay. Who would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, just the way he said it.
Mrs. DuKart, do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion on the motion to award this contract? If not, we'll bid, or we'll bid, if not, we will vote. Mrs. DuKart.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. Mr. Zuroff?
Next, we'll have a, another PowerPoint landfill presentation is how I, is how I have it listed. Basically, it's going to be a recap of the Wink feasibility study, and I should have put on there, said a consideration to approve, maybe just that we're looking for direction from commission. We've had the Wink feasibility study, and, and all of, we've looked at all of that, and now we're, we're looking for direction. We're at that point that we need to decide a direction to go, because of, like, for example, the baler is getting its, on its last legs, and, and so we need a direction from commission. So Aaron Prowse, our sanitation manager is here to present some slides, and then hopefully we'll have some good discussion and, and direction from commission afterwards.
Mr. Prowse. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, commissioners, president. As Gary, or Mr. Zuroff had said, I'm here to present the landfill baler operation that we are currently using on the left-hand side of the screen, and versus the loose filling straight out at the landfill, which would be on the right-hand side of the screen. Little bit of background on the situation is the City of Dickinson is a regional landfill, which provides collection services for both residential and commercial customers in city limits, as well as a surrounding regional area. The City of Dickinson Solid Waste is currently undergoing a major transformation to a more industrial-type uses due to economic growth that's going on in the area from the oil and gas activity over the past five years, and the impact that's coming in from the surrounding area, it's definitely affecting our landfill operations. This growth has been great economically for the area, however, has caused stress to local infrastructure, such as roads, housing, water, and as well as the waste services. As Mr. Zuroff said, we had completed a study by Wink engineer, or Wink Associates in October of 2013 of the baler fill versus the loose filling operations. That study was to evaluate the feasibility of converting, converting the current bail bill operation to a loose fill operation. The evaluation of potential new locations for inert waste expansion, evaluate possible improvements for the landfill operations, recycling, waste collection, scales, and other equipment needed, and to update waste flows, waste flow projections to determine remaining landfill life expectancy of both the inert and the M S W landfill. The map up above there shows the area that the City of Dickinson Solid Waste Facility is accepting at their landfill. As you can see, we go as far north to Kildare, all the way out to the east and Glen Olin area, down south to the Mott Regent, New Leipzig area, and then as far to the west as Midora. The landfill and the baling facility serves a total population of just under forty thousand, according to a study that was completed by the North Dakota State University Center for Social, Social Research. That compares to a population of thirty-three thousand that was on the 2010 census, which is about a twenty percent increase over the last two years. However, the largest portion of that population is found in the service area of Dickinson. These numbers do not take into account for the thousand of temporary workers that are here during the oil boom, and this growth is causing rapid increase in waste flows to the landfill, which serves the major part of southwest North Dakota. These two images are taken out of the Wink study. This is the projected growth that we were seeing, or that we are seeing, starting current all the way going out to 2050. To cap things off, the City of Dickinson is looking at it's going to cap at forty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five people, which is approximately a thirty percent increase from today, and the outside service area, meaning everything surrounding Dickinson, is going to cap at approximately a fifty-five percent increase at twelve-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighteen people. This is the most current updated total tonnages that we're taking in at our facility. We've obviously seen a significant increase in population. Along with that population increase, we've seen an influx in the tonnages of waste coming through from both commercial businesses and residential customers. The increased demand for existing services and recycle, and recycling continues to be a growing priority to the general public, causing increased demands for us to expand these services further. Being the only M S W landfill in the region, we are experiencing the rapid growth from our own community along with those surrounding us. When you're looking at the numbers, 2013, we are, we're at a twenty-five percent increase over last year's numbers of fifty-five thousand. But when you look back five years ago, we're at about an eighty-to-eighty-five increase in total tonnages that came through our facility. As one can see, that these increases have placed a tremendous strain on staffing and operational procedures, and therefore, we need to evaluate the situations we're going through right now. Some of the current operational issues that we're having at our, at the current practices or the ways that we're doing things, is one of the biggest things is the traffic and the scale. As you look at that picture, you can see all the way to the left, there's vehicles that go out the gate. During the summer months, this is a common scene. There has been times where I've had drivers count anywhere from fifteen to twenty vehicles lined up in both directions on Energy Drive. So not only are we holding up the traffic in our yard itself, we're also holding up traffic that's on Energy Drive. As the areas continue to develop out in that direction, you're obviously going to be seeing more increased traffic flows in that area, and especially with the new Public Works Building that's going in out there. With all of that, obviously, you're having issues of backing up traffic, but the scale attendants cannot now do their job properly, because they're trying to do, to push the vehicles through as quick as possible. The state recommends that we do a load inspection of every load that comes through to make sure it's getting into the right areas out at the landfill or at the baler building. That, that procedure cannot be performed properly when you've got a line of traffic. With that, the scale is a, is a above-ground mounted scale, that's actually was placed below ground. There's no access points into that scale, and one of the biggest deals that we deal with now is the winter grime, and anything from snow to water to sleet that happens to seep between it, causing us to clean it out and do maintenance on it regularly. It's a major issue, we spend a lot of time on it, especially during winter months, as the scale freezes up, because it doesn't receive the proper weights. Another issue that we have with the current operation is the baler was built, the baler was purchased in 2002 when our facility got put up. So we are now at the end of the operating, estimated operating life, per the manufacturer, of approximately ten to fifteen years. The machine is starting to show some significant signs of decreased bail compaction. It's definitely increased our downtime, our maintenance costs, and the time needed to rebuild the necessary components. With that, we're also suffering less, less efficiency with the electrical consumption, and we've had some major issues in the past with our overhead crane system. It wasn't designed to handle the load that we have been handling with it recently. When all this was put together, we are looking at about a thirty-five-to-forty-thousand-ton operation. As I showed you guys in the previous slides, we're now at about sixty-eight-thousand-ton. Approximate baler costs, repairs for two-thousand... Approximate baler costs, repairs for 2013, we're at about 95,000. With the whole operation and the problems there, we're obviously seeing the increased waste causing issues on our tipping floor. As you look to the pictures on the right, you can see how the garbage is starting to pile up, and we're running into staffing issues because now we're continuing to keep more people on the floor to help out with the operation. As it currently sit there, we have one to two people up in the scale house, working through breaks and such. Down on the floor where the bales come out, there's three people. On the tipping floor, there's one person, and then there's consistently one person hauling roll-off bales all day long. As I was just talking about the staffing a little bit, currently, the sanitation department has three open positions, with the fourth one opening in the end of January due to retirement. The baling facility currently does not have sufficient staff to complete all the necessary tasks and to continue operating like we are. One of the key things that we look at right now is our daily operations. We're trying our best to stay ahead of things and keep up on a daily basis. However, told you guys earlier, we're having issues with the waste screening due to the piles of garbage that are in there. We don't have adequate spacing to dump the equipment, or dump the loads to sort through the waste properly for anything that's illegal. Again, we're lacking on some of the maintenance on occasion, and then we're sometimes fighting for coverage for accrued sick leave or vacation time. Some of the other issues that we're having, as Shelley capped earlier, is the hiring of employees. There's times we have to advertise positions two to three times to fill them. With all of that, I'm losing diversity. I'm not having the employees getting to move around in the equipment like they're supposed to, thus tied me down to one or two people when somebody needs to take some time off. The turnaround time is hurting us, and then inexperience. When you lose anyone that has a few years of experience, it hurts the whole operation. Also with the whole staffing situation and the open positions, we have issues with hours of operation. We're doing our best to keep the facility open as much as possible, however, that is one of the key things that people often question. Some of the situations that we are running into is, we're running into a definitely awful lot of injuries and preventions. As you can see on the left, the last three years of accidents, they total 17, 26, 21. Minus the major, the cuts, bruises, and scrapes, six, six of the ones in 2011 were due to inhalation hazards. Eight of them in 2012, and eight of them again in 2013. What's happening is the oil field's bringing in a lot of unknown chemicals. They're running through our operations, and it's not only the oil field, it's the commercial businesses as well. People are throwing more and more different varieties of materials into the waste stream, which is causing chemicals to mix together while they're dumped on our floor. Chief Seavock is well aware of when these situations do occur, and we've actually had several others. There has been a couple of chemical burns and such as well. Some potential uses for the baler building would be for storage of the collection trucks and for replacement containers. Currently, as we speak right now, those four doors you see right there is for our truck parking bays. They are completely full of equipment, and we actually have four new trucks that are on order as we speak. I currently do have two other trucks that are parked in different locations right now, so we're running into issues there. On the replacement container side, I order containers in by the semi-loads due to the growth that we are seeing, and they have to sit outside in the elements of the weather. When it rains or snows, all the containers fill up with water, freezing, and then we can't get them separated to put them together to get them out to the customers. Another option that could be for the baler building would be turning it into a recycling center, potentially like an HHW facility, household hazardous waste type facility, or, and also expanding into some other recyclables. That's been a growing demand or priority around the area. Currently, we are doing some cardboard and co-mingle paper. However, if we start doing some separation of the co-mingle paper, we could get a little more dollars in return out of it. Regardless of the direction we go, one of the things we need to look at is landfill expansion and land purchase. Wink is recommending that we make the purchase of the orange and the blue on the map to the right. What that land purchase would do to us would provide a buffering zone to nearby neighborhood properties. It would provide some access roads, some stormwater ponds, space for yard wasting composting, space for stockpiling clean wood, trees, and pellets and things to that, or for chipping. On that property, we could add in a larger maintenance building and also a scale on-site, and then there's a demand for soil to provide daily cover. As we speak right now, we're sitting all right on the soil production side of it. However, if we keep taking from our borrow pits, at some point or another, we're going to have to look for land to expand and haul materials in to provide daily cover, which is a state recommendation. The current projected life of the inert or construction demolition area is eight to 12 years. The MSW site is at 27 years. However, we have a potential to increase the MSW site to 32 years with proper compaction. Expanding landfill at the current site, or the site directly adjacent, is the most easiest way to permit, and it'll lower the potential for environmental impacts as well. If you do get, if we do look to expand into that direction, that expansion would provide an estimated 5 million cubic yards, and would add more than 50 years to the current landfill. If we go in the direction of a loose fill operation, it's, we obviously are going to have growing pains with that as well. One of the biggest things that we're going to suffer no matter which way we go is going to be the wind blowing debris. We are the only landfill in the state of North Dakota that has that issue. Every one of them has that same issue. Part of going into a loose fill operation, we do already have some purchases and budgeted items that are needed to make this transition, twin-engine scrapers, dozers, and things to that order. There was a radiation detection system in the budget for 2013 that was put on hold to see which direction we head. And then with that, we also have, if we go to the loose fill operation, everything would then be at one location, thus giving me the flexibility of staffing. So when our collection routes and things are completed, I would have the flexibility of staff to help out with assisting with the paper picking from the wind blowing debris, or composting, or things to that order. So we'll have some flexibility because everybody would then be at one location for a time period. Going into the economics and funding, Wink had a recommendation of four scenarios. The first scenario was being a no baling facility expansion and bail a majority of the household waste, as we are currently doing right now. Scenario number two is increasing the baling facility, adding in a brand-new baler, and bail all the waste, a larger-sized machine. Scenario number three would be going away from the baling facility completely and going strict landfill of all materials at one location where we're currently at, and scenario, scenario number four would be going away from the baling facility, and then looking at running two different operations, an MSW site where we're currently at, and looking at an inert site a distance away from where we're currently at. The graph down below will explain the capital costs of each scenario on the MSW and inert side, as well as the operation and maintenance costs on both of those, and then the estimated tipping fees for each type of material as well. The estimated tipping fee ranges described are based on a 10, 10, 15, or 20-year payback calculation from the projected total capital and operation and maintenance costs for the baling and transfer facility, and the projected tipping fees only take into account for disposal fees at the baling facility and landfill. This does not include the costs that are associated with the city collection routes. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Zurov.
I want to appreciate, I appreciate Mr. Prowse for giving in this presentation and updating us on the Wink feasibility study, and I guess some of the premise of this was that we would be looking at scenario three and how we would go to that operation of a loose fill. That was just by taking Wink's recommendation and going that direction. We haven't done anything, you know, specifically in that direction. We're waiting for comments from commission and would like any input you might have. We've discussed multiple scenarios. Like Mr. Prowse said, some of the capital costs, we already have included in, in the capital plan for solid waste. One of the, I guess, the biggest things would be a scale at the current landfill, a scale house. We already had looked at a building for equipment, and we'd already budgeted or in our capital plan for an additional scraper and some, a dozer that's needed. One of our goals would be to increase our fencing on that plan that, or on the visual for the buffer area. We talked about putting trees, having a good buffer zone for wind-blown debris, and also, we wouldn't have the labor needed for the baler. And what we would do is, is take some of the labor forces that we have currently at the baler and use it at the landfill for picking. We'd have more personnel to pick up wind-blown debris. We've looked at, they have little vac, vacuums that you can go along and pick up things surrounding the landfill, and I really do feel we would have more of a, more personnel out there, more of a control on what's going on at the landfill because everything would be in one spot as far as the scale and disposal. So I guess we're here to try to get direction. As Mr. Prowse did show you, our current baler is is getting old. We have to either look at replacing or going to the loose fill, and so we're here tonight to take any comments and answer any questions that we can.
Mr. Zurov, do you have any projection for your land costs?
No. We did put some dollar amounts in our capital plan, but we don't have exact dollar amounts yet, and as far as acquisition, it's, no matter which way we go, we have to look at acquisition of property.
In the blue and the orange, how many acres?
I believe it's 240?
About 296 acres total, between the blue and the orange. And what the blue would be, it would be a complete buffer zone. That's where, like Gary was saying, we expand some fencing to the north, or to the east, excuse me, and then also try to put in a few rows of trees to help with buffering.
The buffer zone went, went to take garbage, but the, I think it was about 240, whatever, on the north side, that would, would be the disposal area.
Can I offer up a scenario of, you know, you showed the line of trucks and so on. You would still have that same line of trucks going down in the landfill. Give a three, four rainy day, you vent. Who's responsible for pulling out the non-city-owned vehicles in event of a?
As of right now, that's a big question that we're suffering across the whole, as we speak today. We used to do the polling out until the city was threatened with a few lawsuits, and then we just, we discontinued doing that. What our projection would be is if we do go that direction at the landfill, is to improve the access roads going in there. We're looking at moving both the crushed concrete and asphalt piles out to the landfill and utilizing them for our uses, as well as like the city streets and things to that order. But we did talk definitely about improving the access roads, the dump sites. When it comes to rainy days and situations like that, we would have like a dump pad and then move the material off of that as the weather would permit.
We would continue to have the roll-offs or sites for, for most residents, so they wouldn't have to go down to the face of the landfill. We're considering, you know, multiple roll-offs like we have now at the scale. We want to really limit the amount of traffic down at our face where the, where we're compacting. You would have just haulers most of the time down there. We, hopefully, we could concentrate on more of a wet weather site, like Mr. Prowse said, and use some of the materials we have for, for the roads.
Going from the baler building to the open landfill, one of the questions I get now, and I think you addressed it with, with the amount of employees we have and so on, is a lot of people are asking about extended hours during the week, past five, and then also, a lot of them can only get off there on a Saturday. This would take care somewhat of a Saturday.
Some of the situations that we had addressed is possibly expanding hours for that reason. Maybe do like a seven or eight to noon, or eight to two type deal on a Saturday, which would give everybody an opportunity on Saturdays. And then currently, we are open on, during the summer months until 6:00 PM. Come wintertime, about the end of October range, we hardly see anybody show up after about 4:30. So therefore, that's why we changed to a 5 o'clock close time now.
One of the things we'd still have, we'd still have the scale at the current baler facility, and we could have roll-offs there. We considered having, if, if that facility was open on a Saturday, we could take in recyclables that day and any residence garbage, and then they wouldn't have to go any further than the current baler, and that that would go in the roll-offs, and then we'd haul those out separately. But it would be a recycling and homeowner time that they could bring, bring what they have out.
I would like to see you include what that would cost for Saturday operation into your expenses, from whatever you would recommend, eight till two, or eight till noon, or something like that, because we're going to have to go to it on a Saturday.
Well, in, in that too, even on Saturday, if we go to some, some roll-offs, you know, we could look at, you know, limited personnel open. I mean, we could have one or two, one person doing the scale and directing, where we wouldn't have the whole baler facility need to be open, or the landfill. So we, we could have limited personnel and just for delivery of residents.
For either of you guys, I think I know the answer to this, but which scenario is your druther?
I'll let Gary make the recommendation.
Well, I guess, I guess it's two or three things that I think we've, we've talked about throughout the staff. You know, trying to get labor is difficult right now. We've had a lot of labor turnover. Mr. Prowse has dealt with all sorts of turnover the last couple of years, so that's a big issue. Anything that can require less labor right now is a good thing for us right now, just trying to fill those positions. Secondly, the safety, I mean, the baling is not safe, especially with everything coming in to the baler. Even when we get a new baler, you have, it's labor-intensive, lot of machinery. You're still going to have some incidents, accidents. So that was another thing we, we looked at quite a bit. And then, I guess, if we did expand into recycling, anything like that, we would have to do, and for a new baler, would have to expand that current building, expand the baler, and a lot of times, we have operations in two sites, which makes it difficult to, to operate and manage, and I believe Mr. Prowse has that same opinion. So we feel that especially on the disposal side, this would put everything at one site. Maybe Mr. Prowse wants to add to that. He runs it daily.
As Mr. Zurov was saying, with the expansions and stuff, obviously, you guys just seen the growth tonnages that we're seeing over the last five years. We're just about at 100% double to where we were at. We're at like 80, 85%. If we continue the trends we've been seeing, next year will be 100% double where we were five years ago. In 2002, when this facility was built, it was built for the 35,000 to 40,000 tons. We've obviously surpassed that, and I don't see us going back to that at any time too soon. So there's major dollars that are also tied with that operation. Again, as he said, we're fighting a staffing issue. When I'm running the baler operation, I'm actually staffing six people there full-time in that whole operation. That's more than an eight-hour day operating that machine on a, pretty much a given day. So by making a transition going loose fill... So by making a transition going loose fill, we could utilize those people out at the landfill in the operation we are currently doing part of. As we sit right now, we're running two operations. We're running a loose fill for the material we don't run in our current facility, meaning the oil field waste, the chemicals, the whatever else, the unknowns that are coming in. And then we're running a baling facility for whatever we feel is safety, safe material to run through that operation. However, we're still struggling with the safety issues consistently.
I think we need to make sure that we get the land, the land we need to in addition, because we're adding a lot of commercial and residential properties coming on. So we need to get that put in place, too.
Regardless of whichever situation we go, the land purchase would be a top priority. We're looking at an eight-to-12-year operation left on our inert site that we're currently working on, which is the west part or west half of this operation that we're in. And then the MSW side, we're looking at about a 25-year operation. If we continue seeing the growth we're seeing, that number could easily go down.
I didn't hear you say a number, but, and maybe we can put it back up on the screen here. But can we do that, Rita?
Aaron's working on it.
Okay. I think I heard you both say scenario three.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. As you can see in scenario three, that keeps the tipping fees, long-term with capital purchases and everything, as low as they can be, in, in the range that they're at now. And so I guess tipping fees are one of them. Of course, the solid waste, this is an enterprise fund. It's not by taxes, but by whatever comes across the scale, so it's, the whole area is paying those rates. And that's, that doesn't include the oil field waste, but that would, long-term, keep the tipping fees right there below 50.
The tipping fees that we're currently at for 2014, we're at $42 a ton on our MSW rate and $35 a ton for the inert or C and D-type materials. So scenario three is where those numbers best fit into. If not, you're looking at a, almost approximately a $20, $15 to $20 increase on our tipping fees on the MSW side. A lot of that is driven by equipment costs.
When Wink was in here, I had a sense that we all understood we were going to need to move forward with the project and that it probably would be this, this scenario. And I think you're asking tonight for confirmation of that.
Yeah, we, we want, yes, I guess we want the commission, the direction from, from you guys that you also feel that's the best direction to go. We're at the point where we need to, you know, look at equipment and keep going that direction.
Let me ask this question. I'm thinking we would not proceed with any construction project until we procure the land?
Yeah, and I guess that would be one of the, the things that we'd look at. I mean, we would gear towards, we would try to keep the baler going as long as we can. We would pursue purchase of the land and, and then where the scale might be. If, if the baler does go down, we, we do have a scale now and we could still operate, but, but we would, you know, not put all the repair monies into the scale. We would push towards, or go towards purchasing the additional equipment needed and the, and the land and looking at maybe design of the scale and scale house and additional facilities at the, at the current landfill site. We have been in discussion, some discussion with the adjacent landowner. I don't know if Mr. Coling wants to make any comments, but we, we are starting that, that discussion.
I'd like to make one other point. Could we go back to the slide that has the population numbers on it? I think this is worth looking at, not just for the discussion we're having about the landfill, but just for what we're doing as a city. This is the NDSU projection that's showing that in this year, we would be approaching 36,000 people. And we know we're not there. Now, in the case of landfill, I think it's the tonnage numbers that are going to control what we do. And I also believe, as we have said in other projects, that we have to err on the side of making sure we're doing these things big enough. I still think that. But I think it's worth looking at this, just for a lot of decisions that we make month to month in this city. Do we need to? Other comments from commissioners about the scenario three, moving forward with scenario three?
My main concern was, was moving out of the baler building and so on, but, you know, they went out and did their homework. I feel comfortable with allowing them to proceed with some other information to get going on scenario three. And what we're going to do with that building and so on, I, I think that's still to be seen.
I don't think we have to decide that tonight, but.
I guess I met with these guys earlier, last week, I think it was, they just dropped in and told them they have to convince me for a good deal. And I think for safety and employees and retaining them and so on. I feel good with proceeding with scenario three.
I, I think it's worth noting too, and for the public, that we do have this project in our capital improvement plan, even though we haven't said go forward, we recognize it in our capital improvement plan.
One, I think it's important to realize, two, that even though we have it in the capital improvement plan, this is one of the entities of the city that actually makes money and adds money to our general budget, and it's how we, we fund some of the other things that we do as a city. So we have to give them the opportunity to operate in the leanest, safest fashion and to, you know, at the end of the day, still generate a profit from this department. And they've done it kind of against all odds up till this point, and so we need to stack it back in their favor. It looks like option three does that moving forward, so.
And I think it's real important to purchase the land. We're going to need it. If not today, we're going to need it in the near future. And the way developing is going on, I would hate to see someone else pick that up, and we don't have any place to go.
Well, I think you guys are hearing a definite consensus. I don't know, Mr. Coling, do we need to formalize that with a motion?
Mr. President, a motion is not required. I think we're looking for consensus of the commission. I think we've had that.
Okay.
Vice Chair, just one, one other question. In the capital improvement plan, you do show $6,100,000 in there for a budgeted item. I don't know if that includes land.
And, and that number will likely change, I expect, as we go forward and fine-tune.
Commissioner Steiner, we did throw a number in there for, in, in the capital plan. I think we just threw, it looks like we, we threw a million dollars in there for possible purchase of the property in our capital plan. A million.
I didn't want you to really say that, but it seems like we throw out a bid or a number like that.
Well, it seemed to me you kept asking, so I had to throw a number out.
That's public information.
Well, and I think you guys have to ask yourselves, if for some reason we can't get this adjacent property bought, where does that leave us?
And that's another thing Commissioner Jackson is correct. This is a, the, the site is, has our current landfill. Siting another landfill is almost impossible these days. We, you need to consider what options the city has and what options you want to take if that land is not for sale.
City of Grand Forks went through a landfill development here a couple of years ago, and they went through many years of planning and developing to get their current operation going. As for approval from the state, obviously, expanding onto what you currently have is your best and easiest way of going. If you look at any other option, you're going to have to look at the whole atmosphere and how it's going to impact the environment that's surrounding it.
Okay, well, I think you guys have some direction, I think.
Thank you, commissioners.
Good, good presentation, Mr. Prowse. Where are we?
D.
Zurov, you have a couple of easements that you'd like us to...
Yes, I have two easements. First is the wastewater easement with BNSF. This one is for an easement by Dixon Ready Mix. This is actually part of the line that would be needed for the West Lift Station. And, and then the second one is the potable water easement. This will be for the 24-inch dedicated main. We kept these separate from the projects, not knowing the, how, I guess, how easy the easement would be able to get done. So this is going to be a separate project, the boring of those two lines.
These, these are both BNSF, correct?
Correct.
Okay, can we do these together, Mr. Coling?
Mr. President, you'll need a separate motion for each easement.
Okay, who would like to?
Mr. President, I'd move we approve the wastewater easement with Berlin to Northern.
You have a second. Motion and a second, any discussion? All those, we'll take a vote on the wastewater easement. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart.
Aye.
Mr. Oltmans.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries, and now the potable water easement.
Mr. President, I'd move we approve the potable water easement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Not vote, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart.
Aye.
Mr. Oltmans.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Zurov?
No, I don't. Mr. Berg did discuss the West Gravity line that was up, that we did bid today. I think we got good numbers on that, so we'll be bringing that to the next commission. And I guess if you guys have any other questions, I can answer. But other than that, I'm done.
It's, it's really good to see the number of bids we're getting. That's really good. Can't ask for more. Okay, we'll move on to community development. Mr. Cortan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, the first item on the agenda is the West Villard Quarter District. This is a new provision in zoning code, it's a new zoning district. The general boundary is one block north of Villard between State Avenue and Fifth Avenue West, and south of Villard between State Avenue and Eighth Avenue West, along the railroad right-of-way. The reason for this code, as was stated in the last meeting, was the existing residents within this established commercial district, they have, they have a problem with refinancing, selling, or rebuilding after major damage. This would allow them the ability to change their status to a legal conforming status, and they have the ability to sell, rebuild, or to refinance. City staff recommends approval. There is no change from the first reading. Mr. President?
Okay, this will be second reading of 1538. First of all, any comments, questions by commissioners?
No.
We'll ask if there are any comments from the public on the second reading. Anything from the public? If not, we'll look for motion for second reading.
Move to approve second and final reading of ordinance number 1538.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Not, we'll vote, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oltmans.
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Mr. Cortan.
Mr. President, the next item is a rezoning petition from General Commercial to Downtown Commercial. It's a property located to southwest corner of Highway 22 and West Villard. The property is consistent with the 2035 comprehensive plan. City staff and planning commission recommend approval. There is no change from the first reading. Mr. President?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cortan. Any questions? We'll ask if there's anybody from the public who has any comments on this rezoning ordinance. Seeing none, we'll look for motion for 1537.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Not, we'll vote, Mr. Oltmans.
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is a zoning code, a new zoning code to the, a new zoning code amendment that establishes the new sign code, replaces the old one. The old one's adopted in 2007 and is outdated. City staff went through several planning commission meetings as part of the adoption of that to take in input. The, the sections within the new sign code are as follows. The purpose statement, definitions, general sign and street standards, design elements, permit procedures, action, permit expiration, non-conforming signs and administration. Planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval. There are some key elements that I'd like to summarize, comparing the 2007 ordinance to the one that's proposed tonight. There is a significant reduction in signage for the general commercial and industrial under a current one. We do allow signs that could range anywhere between 300 and 500 square feet. Under this proposal, the signage would be limited to 200 square feet. There is a specific provision that clarifies that billboards and off-premise signs are prohibited to be consistent with the current sign code. Requires a unified sign plan for multi-tenant buildings. Incentives for pylon signs compared to pole signs, a 20% increase if you, if you propose to have a pylon sign compared to a pole sign. Instead of allowing them to have a blanket one, I feel that it's an incentive to, to provide a better quality sign, so we're allowing that within this code. And these are just to name a few. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, let's start out by, any commissioners? Any questions? Do you want any more explanation?
It was overwhelming.
Which ordinance would that be?
Mr. President, commissioners, this will be ordinance 1540.
Mr. President, move to approve first reading of ordinance 1540.
Mr. Steiner.
I'll look.
Again?
We need to do a public hearing first. So we'll ask if there's anybody here tonight that would like to comment on this proposed ordinance. This is first reading. We'll need first and second reading, of course, but anybody from the public who would like to make comment. If you'd state your name and...
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike Derby, 304 16th Avenue, Southwest, Watford City. And I'm here to speak specifically in regards to the amendment to prohibit billboards and off-premise signs. And I'm with Dakota Outdoor Advertising, and we are putting together what we're calling Dakota Digital Network. And if you're familiar with digital billboards, it's the latest technology allowing for ease of change, for quick response, and they're controlled remotely, and so they're easily, easily updated. We're in the process, Dakota Outdoor Advertising, we're currently in Watford City with a digital billboard, Williston. We have permits in Minot. We're going to be locating some digitals in Bismarck. And we currently have eight applications with the City of Dickinson for digital billboards. And what we would like to do is create a digital network and basically, well, encompass the Bakken region and provide marketing and advertiser for regional and local advertisers that want to reach this market. One of the nice things about digital that I'd like to put on the table is the fact that because they are easily changed, we would like to work with, for example, the community development director and provide, and be a part of the community and provide public service advertising for the public nonprofits, for example, or Amber Alert, or Fugitives that are wanted. It's done all over the country, and we want to be a good corporate citizen and provide that for the community, no charge to the nonprofits here in Dickinson. And as Mr. Josephson can address, Stark County, I believe, just approved a variance for a digital billboard north of Dickinson. Is that correct, Mr. Josephson?
Still, your press conference.
Okay. All right, thank you. I guess one thing that I do disagree with Mr. Cortan on is the status of the current ordinance. As mentioned in your comprehensive plan, which is quite a document, it, it points out that the current ordinance does not prohibit or regulate outdoor advertising, billboards, or off-premise signs. And so we have filed for a permit, and the status of those permits, they were denied, and we will be going in front of the Board of Adjustment and to pitch our case that they are legal and that they should be allowed to be a part of the community. In addition to that applica, those applications, we are working with the Houston family, Dale and Virginia Houston. Dale passed away recently, but Virginia was actually involved with the meeting. Dale passed away recently, but Virginia was actually involved with the meeting with the city attorney and Mr. Cortan and Mr. Josephson. And there's currently nine existing billboards along I-94, and I'm working with her to help clean those up and market those. And so what we've done is applied for permit applications that would allow us to actually reduce the size of some locations, increase the size of others slightly, to be standardized in the fashion of national standardized advertising, in the same size as all the other billboards that you see to the east and the west of Dickinson. We are working, and tomorrow I will provide Mr. Cortan and Mr. Josephson some information that they requested in regards to replacement costs. Done a lot of due diligence on that, met with the company, because that was one of the requests, is to break out the costs of fixing those billboards. And the net, actually, those nine, the net reduction, the net effect is a total reduction in square footage of billboards along the interstate. So we worked hard on that, trying to work with the city, make them more presentable, standardized, look better for the advertisers. And we've got a good working relationship with the North Dakota Department of Transportation. They've actually provided a letter of support, saying that those billboards, regardless of what we do, reducing them or increasing them slightly, will be conforming to DOT standards in size. And they're located in the extraterritorial district, if that's the correct term. And so we will, those were also denied, but we will be providing additional information and pitching that to the Board of Adjustment. I'm just, would hope that you would reconsider, you know, the outright prohibition moving forward in your ordinance, and just understand the role that outdoor advertising plays in a community as a low-cost, effective way of advertising goods and services, and the fact that digital billboards are the wave of the future, and we'll have those in every market in western North Dakota, and hopefully Dickinson, to create our network. And we're making quite an investment here. And I would stand by for questions at this time, and appreciate your time this evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you for being here. Questions for Mr. Derby?
Questions for Mr. Cortan. So in this, tell me how digital signs, tell me about those in this ordinance.
Our current ordinance, Table 10-1, specifically states that you have permitted uses and prohibited uses. Billboards are not referenced in there, but when you have a specific section of code, just like any other one where it talks about permitted uses, if it doesn't describe what that use is, by omission, it's the opposite. It's obviously prohibited. Prior precedence to, when I started three years ago, prior staff had made that call that billboards are prohibited per our current 2007 sign code, the one that we're amending tonight, and I have continued that as well. What they are trying to do is increase or modify the existing billboards, and the billboards we're talking about are on the east side of town. There's a process in order for you to do that. They're considered non-conforming signs. So as a non-conforming sign, you can increase the replacement cost more than 50%. What they are in the process of doing is showing that the modifications to these billboards would be less than 50%. If they are, per code, we'll issue a permit. I have my doubts that that will be the case, nevertheless, I'll wait for the information to be provided. So those are the, that's the ones in question with respect to the existing ones. They also supplied new applications for digital billboards, as was referenced earlier. And I've made the call since being here, and prior staff as well, that billboards are prohibited. Therefore, it's a use that we cannot grant, so I had to deny it, based upon our current code.
And billboards are prohibited where?
Prohibited within the city limits and the extraterritorial zone. They're part of the zoning code, which has assigned provisions that you're talking, that we are looking at tonight.
How then do we have billboards all over the city?
The billboards were prior to 2007.
And so our stance is that the billboards that are currently in this town are grandfathered in.
Correct.
Because they were prior. That new, no, new billboards would be allowed within the city limits or the ETZ zone.
That is correct.
And we would rather have junky old signs as our gateway into our community, rather than replacing them with something modern and changeable, is our stance. That's one way to look at it.
Well, yes and no. You've got, you can't pick and choose how you do an ordinance. So the question is, you either allow them, and if you allow them, you have design requirements for them.
Okay.
Or you say, we already have 50 billboards, and I've made, and I've counted them by windshield, and say, for a city of our size, 50 billboards is plenty. You know, the only question is, probably 49 of them are from one company, nevertheless, Newman Signs put them up years ago. And the question is, do you as a community, do you as a board, want to follow with the recommendation from the planning commission, and say, we've got 50 billboards, I think that's plenty, that's well over probably what we should have, and they're congregated in specific areas. If we have enough, then we shouldn't allow more. But the question, but if you want to allow replacement of that, that would be something that we would have to write into code, and many jurisdictions do different things. If you want to replace an existing one, you have to do a two-to-one or three-to-one. Get rid of two or three signs to get one digital. Because I'll tell you, there's a huge difference.
Sure.
Digital billboard will be an incredible profit maker compared to the stagnant ones that you do see. There is some public benefit to that. I mean, yes, they can have the community messages for that, but if they're so benevolent, they could build one and have community messages as well, so.
I'm still not sure I'm understanding.
I don't.
These nine that are out on the interstate, are those part of the 51?
The nine that are on the interstate that they would like to change, yes, they're part of that count.
Okay.
We do have, correct.
Okay, so they are grandfathered, they could be replaced?
They can be replaced up to 50% of their value. It doesn't specify a time limit for that, but I think the interpretation of that, it'd be 50% of, over a period of time, whatever that may be, but that's what they're proposing. They want to come in and state, and what we've, they had figures, but they didn't state what the content was, the composition and materials of it, in order for us to get a definitive figure that they're replacing X number of portion of the sign, and this would be less than 50% per the non-conformity clause of our existing signing ordinance. So if they show that, as staff, it's a ministerial review, it's not a judgmental one, and we can make the call and issue that, and they could modify those billboards. If they're over that, then by code, we, I would have to recommend denial, as I have in the past. But my question tonight is, in our current one, in order to address this, I mean, for the first two and a half years I was here, I only had a general call about that, and then all of a sudden, it's, as we are getting bigger, you have more activities in order to do that, I had to, what I do, whenever there's some ambiguity or a lot of orders, not ambiguity, but there's something in the sign code in which somebody may look at it differently, I'll do a zoning determination letter, I did that back in May. That letter was challenged by Newman Signs. Newman Signs had the same feel as the applicant tonight, and the Board of Adjustment supported my decision for a. That being said, they could also, you know, they're going through the process in order to challenge my decision. Now, you as a commission, if you decide that you want to have billboards, this would be the time tonight to make that call to modify that, or support staff in the planning commission and recommend that we keep it as is.
So is there a request to replace these nine signs with one sign, two sign, three? What's?
Basically modifications to each sign.
And these current signs have to be, or the ones that they're replacing have to be 50%?
Per sign.
In sign?
Uh-huh.
In size, reduction in size.
That's how I would look at it. That's why I'm kind of, I'll wait until they provide the evidence for it. It doesn't say that it has to be 50%, it just says that you could not exceed 50% of the value of it. And the value would be, look at whatever the composition of the sign is today, and if you're modifying it, and it costs, for simplicity's sake, you know, the current sign is worth $1,000 today, half of that, then the modification can't exceed any more than 500.
Don't we have two or three questions going here?
Absolutely.
We're trying to decide if we want more billboards, period. And then we're trying to decide if we want digital billboards.
Digital could be allowed if you, if you decide that you want to have, if you want to modify staff's recommendation for the sign code, and say, billboards could be allowed. The way that I would have to look at the code, I think that we would allow digital. I have not addressed the issue other than defining digital signs, because our current code says no, and I'm recommending with our new sign code that we stay with that, and we just clarified that billboards are prohibited. So I have not specifically provided additional elements, design elements for digital signs, because when you're dealing with digital signs, you, now you're starting to deal with light that, that you want to do distractions, so you may not want to have digital signs that are 600, 640 or 650 square feet. That's what a lot of jurisdictions have. And under our current code, if we did allow digital signs, the maximum would be 200 square feet.
With the question of the nine signs that came up in the conversation tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Does that have anything to do with this ordinance?
No.
Okay.
That's under our current ordinance.
It'd be your current ordinance, so you're...
And they are challenging a decision I've made under a current ordinance.
Your decision, and the Board of Adjustment will use the current ordinance to make that decision.
Correct.
Okay.
After that is adjudicated, then this one would follow suit. So if you change the code, then, to allow billboards, then that would be a different story.
Okay. Other questions?
You talked about the illumination. I'm talking about the one billboard, Highway 22, south of I-94, that's currently there, I think, there's one or two of them there. If that goes to digital, what does that do to the illumination around that area there? I think that's a concern that I'm going to have, and, you know, I got to think where all these billboards are, but, and if they're a good-sized billboard, what kind of illumination problem are they going to have with the neighbors or the people that are in that area? I don't want a flashing billboard looking out my window. But, you know, if we don't have that problem...
We don't currently have that. As far as I know, we don't have a digital one in the area. We do have some smaller ones, like the entrance into the city, where we have the city sign that has some illumination with respect to that, but we do not have a digital one, per se. And that, and I would agree, that's where the trend is going. Many jurisdictions struggle with that fact. It's better to have a stationary one that has some light, indirect lighting on it, or should you have a digital one that has messages change? There are issues with distraction of motorists. The whole idea is to attract, to attract attention. Well, the more, the more illumination, the more strolling that you do have, there's an issue of potential distraction of motorists, and that issues, every jurisdiction has to address one way or the other.
Go ahead, Mr. Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll answer a couple technical questions, or try to answer a question there, and they, and we'll go to the Board of Adjustment on the existing billboards and pitch our case. So it is kind of a separate issue from tonight's issue. But illumination, we had, in a specific issue in Williston, we had a billboard that was within the safety zone of the airport. And with, one thing that Williston did is they adopted an ordinance that talks about the number of lumens that a digital billboard can have. And they worked with the manufacturers. And really, a digital billboard has less ambient illumination than the standard two lights that are lit up on a billboard. Okay, because it's internal, it's pixels, it's not throwing out light or having light projected onto it. It's, you know, internally lit pixels. And it's like 20% or less of the illumination of a standard lit billboard, is the digital side of the component. And so I just want to clarify that. There was, oh, distractions, there was just a study that I'll provide you from the Federal Highway Administration, was just completed, a study on digital billboards. There's a slightly longer read time for a digital billboard than a, than a standard billboard, and it's well below the threshold for the Federal Highway Administration, that for danger, it's by milliseconds, and I'll provide you all that data. It's done by the Federal Highway Administration, digital billboards. For someone to say they're a distraction and cause an accident is not a well-founded belief based on data. And I will provide that to you. It just came out a week ago, because these issues come up. Oh, it's a distraction. They are read slightly more than a standard billboard, don't get me wrong, but not enough to create problems. So those are the two things I wanted to answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I'm going to ask if there's anybody else in the audience that wants to comment on this ordinance? Anybody else have anything to say? Other thoughts? And maybe before, other thoughts? Mr. Cohen, maybe help us with this. It seems to me we could pass the first reading as written, or we could amend it on the spot and pass it with amendments, or we can defer action.
I believe that's correct, Mr. President. I think, given the amount of detail that's in this ordinance, and the length of it, I think my preference would be either option one or option three. I think it may be difficult to amend this on the spot with language that we haven't had time to really craft and think about. But a first reading of an ordinance merely puts the matter on the commission's agenda. Nothing takes effect until second reading, and there are changes that can be made in between first and second reading, if you so choose.
And second reading could happen in two weeks or four weeks?
That's correct.
Or whatever. Okay. Mr. Cortan, anything else that you want to say?
Well, yes. I mean, the distraction issue is one, that you could have studies that say one way or the other. I think the idea is that it's an aesthetic issue, more than anything else, billboards are. They benefit the property owner, they're a very lucrative business. They help out businesses somewhat. Studies have shown that they mainly help out a select few, the ones that are able to pay for the additional billboard cost. And then one just deals with aesthetics. Do you want your city to have, you know, another eight digital billboards that affects the visual, visual corridor as you're driving down the road? If you like that, that's, I'd recommend that you had changed that. If you prefer not to have that as part of your visual horizon as you drive throughout the city, then I would recommend that you would stay with the existing code. It's an aesthetic issue in many ways.
Well, I think the aesthetic issue could be argued both ways. I've seen after a windstorm, driving through town, and half the billboards have half of the image torn off of it, you know? It's, I don't know. I could struggle with this either way.
They're only allowed in the commercial area, right? It's not like they're in a...
Commercial and industrial.
Can I offer a solution here at this time? I would like to see us approve the first reading here, and in between the first and second reading, if you could, sir, provide us with information supporting your discussion here tonight. We weren't aware that you were going to come up here tonight and give us all this stuff. I'd like to see your supporting materials, and basically, what you want to do in town, identifying the current billboards, et cetera. I think to move this on, I'd be in favor of voting for...
I too would like to see us pass this first reading tonight as written. And whether we're back here in two or four weeks, I don't, I don't think the urgency is so great that we can't give the staff time to do more work on this, work with Mr. Derby and whoever else. I, I do have concerns. I think it's... I think it's legitimate to think about how many billboards we want in the community.
Yeah.
I think that's legitimate, and that's what we're trying to do here. I think it's also legitimate to ask the question about digital. Certainly, you offer some positives about digital, but I can, you know, I don't think we want a Las Vegas effect either.
Right.
And understanding that may be overstated. Other comments, or we would look for a motion?
Is that sound fair? Because we are fair and balanced here.
Well, I understand your position, and I will provide you with more information. I do understand that I've got the Board of Adjustments to go in front of also and...
And that really is a separate issue.
...the second reading situation.
You know, and when you say provide information, please get it to staff, you know, so they can assemble it and get it to us and all.
And then, Mr. Cortan, no matter what we do with this and how we craft it, there's always the opportunity for any business or individual to come to you for a variance, and there's always that opportunity for them to come before the commission and for us to look at a case-by-case scenario of things, right?
Yes, the variance procedure goes to the Board of Adjustment. If they affirm a decision from staff, that could be appealed to the City Commission.
So we always have an opportunity to look at a case-by-case basis, location, what purpose of, you know, it's never off the table that you can't do.
Well, and it was, like I said, an overwhelming report. I'd like, I spent a couple hours on it, and I want to read it some more, too. There's a lot in here.
Let's look for motion.
Mr. President, I'd move to approve Article 39.10 sign regulations as presented.
Ordinance 1540.
It's the ordinance 1540, yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, we'll vote, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart.
Aye.
Mr. Oltmans.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, we have an amendment to our subdivision ordinance, then, Mr. Cortan.
Mr. President, this is a minor amendment to the subdivision regulations. It's more housekeeping than anything else. As you know, when we passed the subdivision regulations a year and a half ago, as part of that, we said that we'd come back from time to time and modify it accordingly in order to make it more effective. I have provided revisions with respect to subdivision, minor plat, lot line adjustments, lot combination and lot split. I think that you'll find those is favorable with respect to it. In times past, the way that we defined lot split or lot combination or lot line adjustment, it had to be part of an existing plat. I've modified that to include a meets and bounds description or an unplatted parcel. I think that it still meets the intent of it and would provide greater flexibility. It would remove some of the one-lot subdivisions that you have seen over the last year because they would be able to conform to that standard. I see that as a positive. Just updated it as a community development director, as administrator, and inserted text that allows me as the community development director to waive the requirements for development agreements on such minor plats that we really don't have any specific conditions above the current code. It would be, in essence, a redundancy to have a development agreement that grants me the ability to waive that. If you're in favor of those recommended amendments, I would recommend that you approve that tonight. And are available for any questions?
Mr. Colley, 1541. Comments, questions? We will open this up to the public. Public have any comments on the proposed ordinance 1541 concerning the subdivision regulations? Anybody from the public? There are none, so we'll look for a motion for first reading of 1541.
Move to approve first reading ordinance 1541.
You have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Not, we'll vote, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart.
Aye.
Mr. Oltmans.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. We have only one development agreement, Mr. Cortan, is that correct?
That is correct. I'll defer the introduction to Attorney Colley.
Okay, Mr. Colley.
Mr. President, commissioners, the agreement before you is for Dickinson Hill subdivision. This is a subdivision located south of Interstate 94 and west of the I-94 West Business Loop. As our developments, development agreements go, this one is actually fairly simple. The property does not have a great deal of infrastructure that's needed to be constructed in order to service it. It does have some, including some signalization at the intersection of Fairway and Interstate 94 West Business Loop. Otherwise, this agreement would cover the standard items that we have requested of developers as they begin their development projects. We have talked about this with the developer. He is in the audience if you wish or have any questions for him. Otherwise, city staff will recommend approval. Maybe happy to take any questions, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from city commissioners first? Anything? Mr. Raden, I do see you out there. If you'd like to say anything, I know that we would be interested, and I'm sure the public would too, on any progress that you've made out there, if you care to do it.
Thank you, Commissioner. No, we've come quite a ways. We've been working with the staff on a daily basis, it seems like, to get where we're at today. We do have the Opeland group that's going to put, you know, we're going to bring it quite a bit to the city this year. They've got a 75,000-foot food chain cash-wise. They have the Petco, they've got the Hola Dollar, they've got the, I'm trying to think, Ed, what else they have over there? It's about six different things. It's going to be about a $70 million project they're building. I've got two gas stations that we're not putting in the entryway. We're keeping it like we've showed you on the prints. We've got the strips coming in, in the entryways to make the project more, you know, appealing when you come into the project, so it doesn't look like, you know, we're not putting gas stations on the corners. We've got it put together pretty nice. Ed's been working with us. We've been a little bit harder on him, everybody, as far as the design standards. Been working with the engineers on the roundabout to make that properly. So, so far, it's going good.
Good. Well, thank you. It's good to have you here, and best luck with the project.
Mr. President, we would anticipate then, in February, we'll have the final plat come through. This is coming in front of it, which we may start to do more often with respective development agreements because we want to make sure that certain provisions are approved before you come back with the final plats. But we'd anticipate the final plat to be coming through in February, very shortly.
Makes sense. Makes sense. All right, we need a motion to approve the development agreement for Dickinson Hill subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second. Any more discussion? Not, we'll vote, Mr. Oltmans.
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. With that, any commissioners have anything that you want to bring before us that was not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll ask if there is anything from the public, any items that were not on the agenda that anybody from the public would like to bring forward. Hearing none, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.